This meeting is open. And we have a short agenda today. But some interesting discussions at the end of the meeting. This part of the meeting is for public comment. If anyone here has something they wish to bring before the board that isn't on the agenda, now is the time to do that. So if you have something you want us to hear or comment on, now is the time. When you come forward, could you please say your name and what your business is?
My business? I'm retired.
Oh, well.
Is that okay?
It's the best business to be in.
Yeah, it's a wonderful business. I worked for years to do that. My name is Tom Ballou. I live on 14 Telegraph Hill Road. And my-
That's on the agenda.
Pardon me?
That's on the agenda.
I know.
But now isn't the time for it. Now is the time for public comment for things not on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So you're just like half a minute early. Right. You are. And now we know who you are and that you're retired. And congratulations on this.
Thank you.
Do we have minutes?
I recommend approval of minutes of February 22nd, 2022, as written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Done? Okay, now, Mr. Ballou. Determination of access, 59 Telegraph Hill Road.
We noticed this.
Oh, is there a notice for this? Okay.
I live at 14 Telegraph Hill Road. Okay?
One second.
Notice.
Excuse me.
That's all right.
We have to announce that it was publicized.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Public reading notice was published on 2/18/22. And 14 of others were notified by regular mail. Thank you.
Okay.
And they seem to be here now.
Well, this is my third visit here, listening to Mr. McDonald trying to get his building permit for his home-to-be. And I've lived on Telegraph Hill Road since 1987. With the existing roads, town road at one point, the west side, which is the big discussion part, grows right by my house. I'm at the bottom of the Y. I don't know if there's... But you probably all have seen. Yeah. Does that work? Mm-hmm. Now, so will appear up here? All right. This is my house, right here. Can anybody see that? That's my property. So all the roads come together. The west side, which I assume has been decided, is this side. We'll discuss that because-
East, east side.
Pardon me?
East.
East? Oh, east.
We're talking about the east side tonight.
This side.
East, west, whatever. Okay?
Yep. I have seen fire trucks. I see garbage trucks. I see...I have seen ambulances. I have seen dump trucks. I have seen oil trucks. I have seen everything up that road for all these years, and not one issue. On all of Telegraph Hill, there are 12 houses. Four of them are either weekend rentals, or two of them are vacant. So now we're down to eight houses. One is here, and one is there, and one is there that is occupied. So you have three houses on this side of the street, this side of the building, that use that road. Three houses. Now, let's assume everybody has one car. That's six cars. And you want to come and you want to have Mr. McDonald dig up our road, take down trees, wreck Mother Nature for six cars. I think that's unfair. To me, I love my nature. Everybody in the hill loves the one road. We've negotiated it for years. There's not been one accident, one issue, no road rage, all these years. And now you want to change everything by putting pullaways, widening the road, taking out trees. Me and my neighbors are all against this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Yep. My name is Glenn Carlos. I live at 30 Telegraph Hill Road. This is my property here, which is going to be the most affected of all of them if you go in and start widening that. Now, I do not have an easement for that road on my deed. It is all on Mr. Fanning's property here. I don't know what happens.
Should be over there, Charlotte.
I'm sure somebody will talk about it.
Sir, could you speak into the microphone so that it can be heard at home?
So, obviously, I'm going to be greatly affected if we start widening the road, removing trees. The reason why I bought it is for the privacy of that wooded area. The last thing I want to do is have all of those trees removed and the road scraped up. I think it's totally unnecessary for the amount of use that that road gets. The other half of it, the western side, there's a lot of traffic there. Well, not a lot, but there's more traffic than on the eastern side. But on the eastern side, there's three houses. That's it. I think it's...you're asking Mr. McDonald to do something that's totally unnecessary and will destroy the kind of country environment that we like on Telegraph Hill.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak to make the same or a different point?
So my name is Krista Longnecker. I live at 55 Telegraph, which is the property here with Samuel Laney. I want to first start off by thanking the planning board. This is a thankless job, and I want to appreciate the work you do for the town. But at the same time, I also want to say that we do agree that while Mr. McDonald has the right to pass and repass across our land, but that right is limited to a convenient portion of our land so he can access his property. But the documentation, we've had our lawyer go through some of it and made a legal argument of why the planning board is overstepping in terms of requiring the road to be widened and all the requirements that are being required of Mr. McDonald. I also want to...and if you have questions about the legal documents and the legal courses, I'd be happy to refer you to our lawyer, Liz Lake, who will be happy to address all the precedents in the legal documents, because I can't address that. But I do want to speak to the personal nature of this. We like the private wooded nature of the road, as do the other people here on the street. And that's actually what drew us to the neighborhood in the first place. And we feel that removing the trees on our property, on the town property, on the Fanning property, and on the Carless property would dramatically change the character of the neighborhood, as has been emphasized by other neighbors here in town. And so because of that, we are opposed to the requirements that you've asked by Mr. McDonald. And the documentation we provide, if you...provides the legal backing for our argument. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Lake, and I represent Krista Longnecker and Samuel Laney. Krista was just up here just a moment ago. Just some of the legal issues that are present with the actual policy I'd like to address first. I know at the last meeting, we had addressed that 1962 A&R plan. And it is our position and from our research that that approval of that A&R plan that was endorsed, the board impliedly determined that the lot met the requisite frontage requirements and had sufficient access. And that endorsement runs with the land. And the board today would not be empowered to require that the present condition be brought up to today's standards.
Could I just interrupt you to say that we agree with you?
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, moving on to my next point then. I'd also just point out that I know there's been reference that this determination is an advisory determination to the building commissioner to issue a building permit. We did do some research that this would be an appealable decision. So I just wanted to note that to the board, that this would be a final determination as held by the appeals court. And with respect to Mr. McDonald's legal rights to perform the scope of work that's being proposed, he is an easement holder over my client's property, so it does not give him the unfettered right to perform all of the proposed work. And just wanted to note for the board that my clients have requested certain conditions be imposed on the property, which have already been presented to the board. And... Also, just wanted to reiterate that my clients welcome the development of the lot next door, but also just want to make clear that the changes to the road are going to significantly impact the area, and wanted the board to note that as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Attorney Chris Leberz, I represent the owner of the property. I wasn't expecting to hear all of this tonight. This is all new to me, but I was thinking along the same lines. I know when we were here before, and I echo the sentiments of the young lady who said, "You have a tough job to do." I understand that we try, as best we can as these boards, to bring properties into compliance, and we try to move forward. But when we were at the hearing this last time, you know, there was this notion that this is a dangerous situation. I think the evidence is it's anything but dangerous. We have...since 1962, it's existed, and I haven't heard of one problem whatsoever. So I don't think we can just assume that this is dangerous, because it's not...it's what I would argue, non-conforming or not up to today's standards. You know, widening and paving and having cars going back and forth, I think you can make the argument that it becomes more dangerous by making some of the improvements that are being talked about here as well. We know that these situations exist here in town, and we know that when we're driving our cars in areas like this, we're crawling. We're crawling. And I don't think we're going to be crawling if we're widening and paving and we're making sure so many vehicles can pass each other, you know, along the way. I don't think safety's the argument. I can see your point about compliance with standards, but I'm not sure we're going in the right direction. So I...in any event, I know Mr. McDonald's going to probably be making some kind of a presentation tonight, and my client, the applicant's in full support of it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Jed, I wonder if we could put up the plan that shows the laybys? Show us the one. Laybys, pullouts, whatever you want to call them.
I can certainly bring that up. I do think it may be wise to have the applicant come up and sort of speak to this.
Good.
Provided that it is still a proposal.
Thank you. Douglas McDonald? Now, I've heard that third time is a charm. I hope that's right. At our last meeting, most members of the planning board here, you acknowledged that it wasn't equitable to require the owner of Lot 11 to be solely responsible to upgrade the eastern section of Telegraph Hill Road to the Town of Falmouth subdivision standards of width, grade, and slope. However, what I didn't hear nor understand when I left the last meeting is what would individual planning board members consider to be reasonable improvements to require of Lot 11 owner? It's difficult to place a new lot owner in the middle between existing homeowners who want to maintain the character and ambiance of the neighborhood and reconcile that to the Falmouth determination of access requirements in an equitable manner. I've had a number of conversations with the property owners on Telegraph Hill Road. In fact, I've spent hours speaking with them, several of whom are in this room, and it's fair to say I know more about some of them than I do my own neighbors. All of them have expressed concerns and reservations about removing trees and widening the road, and you've heard that tonight. I did a rough calculation of trees. It's about 120 now. You know, that's all the trees, if you take small ones to the big ones. But it's a fair amount of trees, as you can imagine, going through there. I guess I just have one question, Charlotte, if I could just ask you on behalf of the board, but just...would you mind sharing what you believe would be an equitable solution in terms of, you know, a meeting of the minds? You know, what do you think would be reasonable?
Well, I think it's unreasonable to ask one member of a seven-member board to pronounce that when we haven't had an opportunity to discuss it. That's my first thought. So I think a new idea has been presented. I think you're quite right. Nobody speeds on that road. That's a very good point. I drove that road yesterday. It was, you know, water in the puddles, going slowly. I remember the steep incline getting up onto the part that we're discussing, but I'd forgotten how curvy it is. And certainly, I was crawling along, and I was really interested in what I was seeing. And you're right, the neighborhood has a really nice rural character. It's woodland. So I've been there. I think other members of the board have been there. We've heard what you have to say. We're all concerned with preserving all of Falmouth's character to the extent that we can. So I think we share a lot of concerns, but I'd like to hear from all of the board members first. Thank you.
Sure. So Patricia, maybe?
No, well, I think when you have seated the floor, then we'll have our discussion. We'll just follow our regular procedure.
I just got to say this, Charlotte, is like, I feel like I'm playing...it's like, you're hiding...not that you're hiding, but it's just like, to a certain degree, you feel like it's a guessing game, and I'm just trying to understand how everybody feels.
No, I think you're frustrated by a lack of back and forth. We all are.
Yeah.
Let's try it this way. We'll just hear what the board has to say.
Well, timeout here.
Bob?
We're asking people in the neighborhood now for their comments. It's your turn to talk.
Then we talk.
After that, we discuss it.
Sure.
Well, wait, maybe the others are content that their points have been made, and now Mr. McDonald can carry it forward. Is that true? Or are there any of you who wish to speak first before the board starts discussing it?
I have something to add.
Okay. And then, Mr. McDonald, you can come back.
I've seen three of these drawings.
Oh, please stay by the microphone, do you mind? That's to connect to the home audience?
There's a pointer. You can use the mouse. You can use the mouse.
Well, you...it's...you can use colors here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
The green property is town property.
Yep.
If you're going to impose one of those blue bypasses in there, why isn't that one of them on the town property? First of all, if that's going to encroach on my property line, I would be very upset about that. So I've seen those things move around. They're on this side, they're on the western side, they're on the eastern side of the road, and I know this is just a sketch. And Mr. McDonald has been very upfront with us, telling us that, you know, if this goes through, they'll have everything marked off by a surveyor, and we'd know what's going on. But it's just, we're in a really, to me, a very uncertain course of events here, and I'm just really frustrated by it all. I wish we would pin some of this stuff down if this is going to go through, so that we know exactly what I, as a property owner, am up against, since I have the longest stretch of property.
Mm-hmm. That's reasonable. I understood this, not to be tentative. I thought this was a proposal. Is that not true?
Frank? And he and I have talked about that.
So on this particular drawing, which was the first one, there was actually a correction to it, which I had sent out, and I'd spoken to Jed about. But these were approximate locations that we came up with. And so why don't I just do this? I will continue with what was a proposal, then you folks can respond and give the neighbors an opportunity. But trying to understand what the...what I would call be the minimum requirements in balancing the needs of the neighborhood, the wants of the neighborhood with the wants of the town, and being the guy in the middle of it, which is...I'm doing my best. So I've met with Jed a number of times. He's been very gracious and helpful, and I've spent a lot of time talking to him, trying to get perspective of what the planning board would like to see. I've met with the planning, the building commissioner, to get his perspective. I would have loved to have him override you folks last time, but he wasn't going to do that, so... And then I spoke to Boyd DeMello, who's the Fire Department's Fire Prevention Officer. And, you know, all three of them, when I presented them what I thought would be an equitable plan, they said, "That makes sense, so, you know, you can discuss that with the planning board." And I did meet with the people in the neighborhood to explain to them what was going on. So the first thing is, just in general, to make sure things are right, I mean, Krista and Samuel, I mean, they have concerns about accessing their property, and, you know, what does this way allow me to do and them to do? There's some questions there, and then there are questions exactly where the way is and the road and so forth. So it just makes sense, have an engineering firm come down and stake everything out so there's no ambiguity in terms of the existing right of way and the existing road. So number one, I would do that. And it only makes sense, because I don't want to be cutting down trees on anybody's property that you shouldn't be, so that's just inviting a lawsuit. The other thing that we would do is, so that would be going from where the lot is now, Lot 11, down to number 18. So it's the house right before...if you can see that first blue at the top of the screen there, again, that's an approximation. So we would mark it out. And then in terms of the trees to be cut, we would mark those off as well. You know, the trees that would be proposed to be cut, so that the neighbors would have an opportunity to take a look at it. I did speak to Jed about, you know, if there was some give and take on some of them, if there was a particular tree that they didn't want to have cut, well, maybe, you know, that one would be saved, and we do something that sort of have a meeting of the minds that would work out, so that it'd be a win-win situation. The other one was, you know, trim the overall trees and brush, so that there would be an 18-foot path. That's starting from the Y intersection. So we talk about the eastern and the western loop of Telegraph Hill Road. It would be at the start of that. And then, you know, move back toward the lot. Limbing the trees up to 15 feet, so the branches would be cut. So the other issue was creating a two-vehicle passing lane bypass. That's about approximately 18 to 20 feet wide, 40 feet long, that give vehicles to pass, and they would be approximately 300 feet apart, as indicated there. We would go with the guidance of the engineering firm. I did speak to them, and they said they would help locate those bypasses, what they thought would make sense in terms of the soil underneath it. I actually did research on how you would structure that, because sometimes if you just, you know, put stuff over it, you're going to get ruts again. And, you know, the researcher's saying you actually want to, instead of having a curve to the road, you want to make it flat, but angle it so the water goes off to the side. And the engineering firm said they're very familiar with how to get proper drainage out of that to mitigate the, you know, the ruts forming again. They're going to form again, but just to mitigate it a little bit. So I'd work with the engineering firm to make sure that they're built to a reasonable expectation to last it for some time. And then, you know, I'd work with the land services firm that we would hire to repair the ruts in the road. There is a lot of dense grade and recycled aggregate that's already been put down there, and I have spoken to several land services firms who said that, you know, just putting down crushed stone isn't a good idea in that environment. You're better off having recycled aggregate, which is currently on the road there as it is. So the ruts in the...that are there, we'd flatten them out and make sure that they would be safe. So in essence, what you're doing is you're coming down, you're having two bypasses there. One of the problems with the Falmouth property is that there is a drop-off on the Falmouth property that's been filled in. It's kind of...it's at the narrowest point. So there's a possibility you can move that second blue box maybe down closer toward, you know, the opposite side of the Town of Falmouth property. But again, I was going to...that'd be something I'd go over with the engineering firm when they stake it, and they're backed up right now, so I could not get them to go out and stake it and look at it. They said they're about six weeks behind. And I would do that with Jed, but the idea is that's the approximate locations. And then, you know, my expectation would be is that that work, excuse me, would be done after receiving a building permit, but prior to an occupancy permit. It wouldn't be done right away. That was the...what I viewed as the minimum approach.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then you can respond once we had a chance. So there will be some back and forth possible. Okay, Jed, do you want to share what you've learned with the board?
Well, just today, Boyd DeMello from the Fire Department did send correspondence, which each of you received tonight, indicating that they approve the plan as Mr. McDonald has just outlined. As you mentioned, we...or as Mr. McDonald mentioned, I met about in the site. We walked the road. We talked about those pull-off areas. I do want to clarify perhaps some of the language about the pull-offs. I think the intent is to add additional, perhaps 10 feet off the side of the traveled surface, to allow for a pull-off. I don't believe that you're going 20 feet into the property.
That's right.
So it would allow for a car to basically pull off the side of the road, allow another car to pass. We talked about the trees that would need to be cut down. And, you know, I think that it's a reasonable effort to make or to try to reach a compromise between, you know, the concern about the character of the neighborhood and perhaps the need for you folks to have, you know, access along that roadway, at least on the eastern side of the loop.
About how many trees?
Well, it depends. I believe Mr. McDonald indicated about over 100, 120 trees that would need to be taken down, and those vary in size.
Oh, yeah, small to big.
Small to big.
They do, but the ones near...there are a few big trees near the road, but not many. They're mostly small.
There are...if you're brushing back 18 feet, it's quite a big swath, and you'll capture some big ones, for sure. I don't know off the top of my head how many there were, but there were several that you'll...
Okay, but just to clarify, it's 18 feet including the roadway. So how much to either side?
Well, I guess that would really depend on, you know, what's achievable along that
Right. So say the road is like 10 or 12, somewhere in there. So it's another six.
Give or take. Yep.
Does it have to be uniformly on either side, or can it be favored depending on where the trees are?
That's what I was getting at. Right.
Okay.
So if there's possibility to save bigger trees, I think that it would be advisable to try and do that, and just sort of go around them if you can.
So we can all picture what might happen.
Right.
There are some pitches here. Are they up there?
So they see the folder at the very bottom of the tray?
This one?
Yeah.
I'm concerned that what might be in our minds' eye is what happened to Palmer Avenue when the state came in. when the state came in and cleared the sides, and it looked gross. This isn't that.
So this is the first, this is the first blue box that you saw approximately. Number, house number 18 is, you know, right there. And Tom's house is number 14 down there. But off, on this side, is where we were leaning toward. You can see there's a telephone pole right there on the right side there. So there's already been some sort of a clearing there. There'd have to be some fill back, you know, right around here. But that, again, trying to be respectful to, you know, the neighbors and so forth. But that was the area of the first pull-off. That's looking in the other direction. One of the concerns you have there, there's a lot of boulders there as well, with those big trees. I mean, cutting through there, speaking to one of the land services company, he was questioning if you had to do blasting there or not. It's like, oh, eegad, so, because there's a lot of rock there, so anyways. And it is a moraine.
Okay, I think we get the picture.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak before the board discusses this?
I have something else I'd like to say. Do you have a assessor's map here of the whole area?
Well, you can use that map out there, or...
Uh, I think that'll work, yeah.
This one here?
Yes.
So, I am Lot 30 on there. As you can see from the Y, back on Lot 10, where it starts, if you come up the western side of the loop, that's a town road.
I don't think that's correct. So what you're seeing on the map there, the red line indicates that it's a private road, the entire section of Telegraph.
Okay, but look at the property lines, and this is the assessor's map. Look at the property lines.
I think the whole, our information is that the entire thing is a private road.
The GAS maps, when it's red like that, designates private road. That's what the town assessors, that's our public information map right there.
Well, who owns the property that that is on?
You, well, I'll let your lawyers describe that to you, but my understanding is a layman is that you own the fee, but there's a right-of-way that everyone has the right to use, to pass and repass, and more, that I'll go into later. But your land is encumbered by a right-of-way. You own the fee, you own the actual land, and the lawyers can correct me if I'm wrong, but a right-of-way is a right-of-way that people can go through, and they have the right to clear it, maintain it, and get to their property. Everybody does. You have the same right to get to yours, so does everyone on the street. You all share the same rights.
Okay, so on Lot 17, there is a concrete bound that is to the west of that black line.
Right-of-ways can go right through the middle, they don't, the bounds, again, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Right-of-ways, bounds mark the edge of the property. Right-of-ways can go smack dab right through the middle of the property. And a right-of-way is usually described in a length and a width. And those lines that you see on the assessor's map that show the right-of-way, that's, I believe that's what they're showing, the length and the width of the right-of-way.
Okay.
And I think if you go read the old deeds, they actually talk about the right-of-way. And it says that there's a 40-foot right-of-way.
Okay, there is a, there is a property marker, a bound, right here. There is also one right here, on my property. So who owns that land in the middle?
You own it. But you, your neighbors and every, everyone that's in that subdivision that goes back, there's a plan, a subdivision plan that goes back to 1960, it's Country Club Estates.
Okay.
And it shows a right-of-way going across all those properties. And that just means that you own the fee, which is the land underneath. But everyone that's in that subdivision has the right to go back and forth as much as they need to, to get to their own property, as you have over their land going the other way. It's a shared right-of-way. I'm sure your attorneys could look it up for you. I did some research, I looked it up.
How come they don't show it on this side?
It's an excellent question.
I don't...
The town, to the best of my...
I think if you zoom in a little bit on this map, could you zoom in more? You might see it pop in. One of the things I've found on using these maps, when you zoom in...
There it is.
There's the right-of-way that I was talking about. It just didn't show up, you didn't click in further. There's the right-of-way, it does show.
Fine, if everything goes on there...
That's all we're talking, that's all they can. We can't have them go on private property, but if they have a right-of-way to do it, they can. And they have to, they can if they want to.
Okay, this road...
Because that was the road layout from the subdivision in 62.
That is what was planned in 1962, that right-of-way was planned. And it was signed off by a planning board member, and we're all in agreement that that's not, that goes, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming, grandfathered lot. It doesn't have the right frontage, but it had the right frontage when it was approved. And that subdivision in that right-of-way was all approved, signed off by this planning board. And I even have the signature of the person that did it, so we've done the research on it. But that is the right-of-way, and my understanding is, I'll read it later on, but what they can do with that right-of-way, everyone has the right to clear it, maintain it, do whatever, even pave it if they want to. We're not asking for that, but a right-of-way is a right-of-way.
Why don't you read it now?
Okay, I, because I prepared for this, I wasn't sure we were going to get a town lawyer to answer it. So a right-of-way is a type of easement that allows only limited right to pass and repass, but not to park. That's going to come up later. The benefit of property has the right to improve the easement and make usable for its intended purposes. This includes paving, putting in sidewalks, utilities, lighting, removing obstruction, trees, or stone walls, even if they were placed there then by the burden property owners. So in other words, if you put a stone wall in the right-of-way, everyone, if someone needed access, they could remove the stone wall from the right-of-way. That's what my understanding that means, but I'll defer to the lawyers to answer that question. Use of an easement may change as the needs of the subservient or dominant owners change. So that means, if you had a, I don't mean to interpret the law, but if somebody all of a sudden got a bigger car, and they couldn't get into their house, but they had a 40-foot right-of-way, and they wanted to clear the way in so they could, my understanding, but I'll defer to your lawyers that you paid for, that they have the right to do that, within that right-of-way, not on your, so you own the fee, but the right-of-way is to the benefit of everyone in the neighborhood, and your property is burdened by that benefit when you bought it. That right-of-way was on the plan when you bought it, so that's the burden you have that they get to use that land.
Okay, so, we've been driving up and down this road for a long time. We, I moved in in 2009. It was like that before. There's no turnaround there. It's probably narrower than the other side, right in here, along here. Nobody's had any problems getting a truck through, or an ambulance, fire truck. They've all, they've all been up and down this road. The fire truck makes a loop around there a lot. And the neighbors are so closely linked. We have our own little, private little club up there. And, you know, if you meet somebody coming head-on, it's an honor to be the first one that actually gives way and backs up into somebody else's driveway. I mean, that's how we deal with it. We don't need a big scar of trees removed and roads paved, because the last thing we want is to have, you know, people zooming around in their cars. We like that country way. We like the rural nature of that. And if you start knocking down trees and 15 feet up, if you look at what happened with the power lines just down the road from us, they left a scar that will never heal. It's destroyed the nature of the property beyond that. So if you... I'm sorry. Right down in here, the power lines were cleared. And if you drive there, it's absolutely horrible. It's destroyed the nature of that, and that's what I don't want to see. I don't want to see that bordering my property.
I think you've made your point very clearly. We all live in Falmouth, we all see the damage that's being done. It's not on my street. I mean, we're familiar with it, so we understand it and we sympathize. I think if we don't have a new point to make, we can maybe move on.
I have a question. I just have one question, actually. And that is that we're talking about the trimming of the trees to an 18-foot width. But what I'd like the clarification on is whether that means to have an 18-foot wide drivable surface, or just the trees cut back to 18 feet? Because a portion of the road is actually U-shaped, and so I'm curious as to, I don't, that's just my question.
That's what we tried to clarify a little bit earlier. That 18 feet includes the roadway. So you're adding 6 feet, which would be 3 feet to either side.
That's not quite my question. My question is whether it has to be an 18-foot wide drivable surface, that you can actually put a car on all 18 feet? Or whether it's just the trees have to be cut back to 18 feet?
Not drivable. Okay, so, is it okay to move forward now to the discussion of the board? And then if you want to reply to that, you can. So let's, let's hear, Bob?
I'd like to go first. I've been thinking about this an awful lot, and that was one of the reasons why I wanted this determination of access to be part of our discussion later on. But now seems to be the time to bring up the points that I was going to bring up during that discussion. So I'm going to read some of the notes that I have here. When I joined the planning board, one of my missions was to help maintain the character and charm of Falmouth, and not allow it to be turned into a bedroom community like we see all over the place. And CVS was one of those tests that we went through, that I threw down the gauntlet for that, because what they were going to put in was absolutely horrendous, and I didn't want to see that, and I don't like seeing that in this town. We have a lot of small developments that came into being long before some of the bylaws that regulate current subdevelopments now. And the result has been clusters of unregulated development that did not consider the safety and access concerns presented today. Many of these have been made up from intermittent lamb subdivisions, properties that were accessed from cot paths or driveways. And we've heard over and over that there's numerous situations like this in Falmouth. And it seems like we keep coming into this over and over and over again, where we're trying to take something that's been in existence forever and make it meet modern standards, like taking a 1950 Chevrolet and making it into a 2022 Lexus or something. It's just not going to happen. These neighborhoods are part of the character and charm of the town. The undeveloped nature of these neighborhoods is what makes them attractive to a certain home-buying clientele. These roadways should be considered pre-existing, non-conforming, and should be accorded a certain amount of discretion. And the question is, are wider roads safer? We have parking on both sides of Main Street, and it acts as a traffic calming device. When I'm here on Main Street a lot early in the morning when there's no cars, people are driving 40, 45 miles an hour down Main Street. We're currently trying to get the state to allow us to allow parking on Davis Straits, again, for traffic calming reasons, because the narrower the road, people slow down. If wider roads are safer, then why are there so many fatalities on 151? And none on this road that we're talking about? I really, I think we need to look at what's been there, what's been working. If people want, choose to buy in these neighborhoods, it's like Pam always says, it's buy it beware. You know that, okay, you live on this narrow road, maybe an ambulance can't get down there in two minutes. It might take 10 minutes, and maybe you'll die as a result of that. That's the risk you take. At what point do we stop becoming a nanny town? I mean, it just gets a little ridiculous, I think, when we're going to take a neighborhood that's been in existence all this time, and we're going to put 18-foot wide roads and cut down all these trees. I'm just not for it. I really don't like the turnoffs. I think people have been managing just fine. And I could not vote for this plan that's in front of us now. I think, I think the neighborhood is the neighborhood, and we shouldn't be overriding other planning board decisions. And you look at the road layout there. I mean, at that time, they could have put in a 20-foot wide paved road, but they chose not to. So why are we overriding other decisions? I mean, are people going to be overriding us at some point?
Probably.
I mean...
Shall we just go in order? John, do you want to comment?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Jim?
Yeah, I think that, first of all, I think the only determinant here is whether it's the proper access. There's no question of whether it's a build-able lot, that has been proven and it's grandfathered. However, trees grow. And I'm sure there's a lot new trees that have grown there since the 1960s when this is approved. So there has to be a reasonableness of keeping it clear, that if it means that we're never going to cut down trees, and they keep crossing over it, that we're never going to do that, and it's getting smaller and smaller. One of the things the planning board has to do is, somebody's got to say, "This is going to be a safe road to travel, and this is a balanced way to do it." And we're not necessarily here just to make every property owner there happy. We're for future property owners, we're for the whole town and every street, we have to do. And sometimes we have to make hard decisions. And I think there's a really easy way to do a compromise here, make it safe for everybody, let Mr. McDonald build his house, and have a reasonable roadway that no way, everyone says, "Oh, we're trying to make it industrial, our current standards." 18 feet isn't the current standard, even, you know, it's, what is the current standard?
22, for a second.
22.
Yep.
So, you know, we're not trying, you're using that language, "We're trying to bring it up to current standards." We're not even close. We're trying to find a compromise that's safe for everybody, and not just safe for you people that own this land now, for everyone that lives there in the future. We, it is our job to do that. So just because we're not, you know, giving you everything you want, our decision is not just for you, it's for everybody, and we've had to make some harder decisions. Bob's sentiments are, I think, held by a lot of people. But I think, you know, that's a tough road to get up and down. If there's places to turn around, the one time, I've driven through twice, you're right. One neighbor backed up 500 feet and let me get by, that was great. And I think if there was a place that was only 300 feet, he would have turned around, I would have bought him. And so there's got to be a reasonable compromise to make it safe. But you keep saying we're doing it to current standards, that's not even close. We're just trying to find a compromise that makes it safe. And as far as the rights go, Mr. McDonald has the right to clear the right-of-way, pave it if he wants to. Not that he should have the right, but that's what the law says on a right-of-way. You have the right to do that. So we're not trying to force it, we don't want you to pave the road.
Okay.
We just want to find a reasonable way to make it safe, and that's all we're trying to do.
Pat?
I really do agree with Jim on everything he has said. And I was pleased when I saw this note from Boyd DeMello, from the Fire Department, saying that the, whether there are five elements that were proposed by Mr. McDonald, that the Fire Department finds this a very good solution. And I like that myself. I live on a narrow road, not as narrow as your road, for sure. There have been times when it has been difficult, particularly since we've got a 90-degree bend down at the bottom of the road that goes right into Oyster Pond if you're sliding. So I can understand the fact that we have a duty as a board to make this as safe as possible and still retain the charm of the neighborhood. I think this plan will do it.
Paul?
I've been struggling a bit with this as well. When I drove up there, it was, I had not been there before, it was a pretty interesting neighborhood. And people seem to like where they live. We struggle on access mainly because of the Fire Department, and we rely on them to tell us they can't get up a property. We have an option here as a compromise to try to work this thing out. And it's been supported by the Fire Department, to not do all the things that we'd normally do on a new road. So I think the concept here to move forward with these adjustments here makes sense for everyone. And I think there's a, I don't see destroying a neighborhood, taking down all the trees would achieve anything at all. So I'd be in favor of these options that the Fire Department has basically endorsed as a solution to solving this problem in that area.
Pam?
I'm not going to repeat what everyone has said that I agree with. But there's something about removing trees that is very anti-everything I believe in to begin with. I remember when we had the solar people come to look at our roof, and this one young, very enthusiastic man said, "Well, you need to remove that oak tree, which has probably been there for 100 years, and you may want to cut back." And my husband looked at me, and I looked at him, and we thought, "We wouldn't have you come and do this work under any circumstances, because I'm doing it for the environment." And he just wants to hack off our tree limbs. So if there's no reason to start whacking down trees, I don't think we need to go whack down trees. I think sometimes, you know, you up the canopy to allow emergency vehicles to get in. But it's not broken. The one issue I have is we look to make things better that may not need making better. What a terrible sentence. So I, I basically agree with what everyone has said. And I still say buyers beware. You know, look at, look at the documents before you sign it if you purchase a house and see, see what effect it's going to have on you. And that means you're doing your homework before you sign a purchase and sale agreement. And I'm not a realtor like Jim. I'm a psychologist. And I just have a problem with changing something that needs no changing. So that's where I am.
Okay, I guess it's, it's my turn. In a way, you all have to have this inflicted on you because of the change coming about because of the economy. We have seen an increasing number of requests for building on these backlots and very marginal roads. And there are going to be more of them. Falmouth is pretty well built out. There are a lot of dirt roads still. The price of that land is going up and up and up. And there's going to be a lot of pressure on this board to approve marginal roads. So it gave us a really fine opportunity to explore exactly where are we? What are our rules on this? How do we do it so that we're fair to everybody and we maintain the character of the town? Which is part of our responsibility as a planning board. So in doing that, we found, first of all, what we have been calling a policy, it's not a policy, really. A policy is something that's mandated. A guideline is something that's a general recommendation. A policy in Falmouth is something that's been approved by town meeting. This policy that we've been calling a policy, the twenty-foot, the eighteen-foot, whatever it is, is a general recommendation. We have flexibility to be able to maintain the character of the town, for which I am grateful. I am very pro-Tury, like Pam, probably like every member of the board here. So it was good to find that out. And we really need to change the title on this document that we've been using so it doesn't say policy. It says guidelines and procedures because that's what they are. And we can be flexible with them. So we've cleared that up and you've, you've had to suffer through us rediscovering that. Thank you. I, I appreciate that. The, the issue of how many trees. Mr. McDonald is saying that he's going to work with the engineer and with Jed to be able to find, and I would assume with the neighbors, to find an accommodation that works for the pullarounds. The fire department, which as Paul said, that's what we look to, has given these. And I wonder if you've all had a chance to see them. Shall I read them to you? Okay, just so you all hear them at the same time. "Trim the overall roadway width to a total of eighteen feet of trees and brush from the eastern side of the wide to fifty-nine Telegraph Hill." So the western side that faces the water isn't affected. We're talking only about the eastern side. Looking at the photographs, we could see the tire tracks that you've made. And of course, you don't all drive in exactly the same ones. So I'm going to assume that was like ten to twelve feet. That would be three feet to either side in addition, which seemed for much of the way to just be leaves, not something else. But that will be after worked out, Mr. McDonald, Jed, the engineers, and the neighbors, you'll see. "Create two vehicle-passing lanes approximately twenty by forty feet as indicated on the improvement plan." The twenty-foot width would include the road. So the clearing off the road would be more like eight to ten feet. Next, "From the fire hydrant down to number fifty-nine on the eastern side, where the side of the road is level with the road, make that area a possible third bypass." But you would find that point. And then, "Repair the ruts and bumps with recycled aggregate or whatever you work out with your engineer, something that will work." If they have a better way to do that that doesn't wash out, you would reasonably take the better way. That seems to be what the fire department, Boyd DeMello at the fire department, is advising. So, Mr. McDonald, is that, that sounds acceptable to you? Had you seen this?
I wrote it.
So you know it. I bet you memorized it, whereas I still have to read.
I wrote it with Jed's help and, and...
Okay, and now all your neighbors have heard it.
That's a yes.
Okay, so that's, that's where we are. So this determination of access, we, the A and R is already in place. That's not in question. You definitely have, you would be working with your neighbor on coming across their easement. You wouldn't be doing something that, that they don't like. I wonder if we could have that framed as a draft, a motion for us for our next meeting? And then, and condition it?
There was one other point that Mr. McDonald made, that this all would not necessarily be done until he would seek an occupancy permit. And that also makes sense. Because when there is construction going on, there's going to be churning of the road and...
And so forth.
Yes. So I think that should be part of our decision as well, too.
Well, that actually would require, I think Jim has found another point along those lines. Did you want to bring it up now?
Yeah, it says, "We're supposed to determine the access at the point we determine it, not what somebody's gone to improve it." So technically, the road should be improved and then we say it's acceptable. I think we could compromise if, if it's an assigned agreement that, that he's going to do it after the fact so you can get started in building your house. We're not trying to hold you up on that. We're, our determination of access is supposed to say, yeah, we go look at the street and say, yes, it has the right access. It won't have it until you do the work. And I just want to make one other point, in case there's a lot of lawyers in this room. I was quoting Mass Electric versus Santos of Mass nineteen forty-four about what you can do on a right-of-way, in case you guys want to look it up. So I was, you know, that you have the right to, to do whatever you need to do to get by this board, to get access to your property.
But he also has to live in the neighborhood. I think he...
Right, you've got to get along with the neighbors, too. You don't, I mean, the town bylaw says it should be paved, drainage, streetlights, sidewalks, twenty-two-feet-wide sidewalks on both sides. We're not, people are referencing that's what we're doing. We're not doing that.
Paul?
I'd like to make one other comment, too. One of the things we're worried about on this board is setting precedent. If we set a precedent, every developer comes in and says, well, you proved it there. Why don't you prove mine? I don't think in this case we're setting precedent at all. I think we're trying to accommodate not only the neighbors, but looking at the character of the neighborhood and the topography and the road layout that's there. And I think we're trying to work this thing out for the benefit of everyone. So I don't think it's a precedent-setting issue. And I don't think we should mention that.
Our current town planner and our past town planners agree with you because setting a precedent is only for a situation identical to this. And there will be no identical situations. Every situation is unique. So we don't really have that problem. So could...
So for clarity's sake, it sounds like there's an agreement between the board and the applicant in terms of what the proposed improvements would be?
I believe, and we would condition it, that these things will happen.
Okay.
Yeah. So are we ready to take that as a motion?
Yeah.
Hi, Elizabeth Lee. I just have one comment with respect to the easement rights. I know you, we're citing to a nineteen forty-four case, but there are some more recent Supreme Judicial Court cases that limit their ability to improve the road. And I, I can, I can quote you. "The holder of an easement over an existing road is entitled to make reasonable repairs and improvements to the roadway so long as there's due regard to the rights and interests of others." And that is a land court decision that's quoting SJC decision. And also, there's a two thousand fourteen case which holds that in the absence of express language, an easement holder cannot, if his ability to pass and repass is not impeded, challenge the sufficiency of the way. So I just wanted you to note that there's some...
I'm not trying to play lawyer. I just read a definition. These people were saying it, so I just wanted to offer it out there. When I looked it up, that's what I found, a definition of a right-of-way.
No, I, I understand.
So you don't agree with it? You're saying that we can't cut down any trees?
To the extent it's requi... I, I would...
She didn't say that.
I thought that's what she just said. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
I would just disagree that he has, that there is the unfettered right for him to make all of the improvements just by the fact that he has rights through the, through the right-of-way. He only has right to what's called, what the court has described as a convenient way. And we would, it would be our position that that's...
Is what we're doing convenient?
The existing road, I would argue, was the convenient way. But the improvements and then, and if there was any determination made by the board that would require, require the widening of the road, then that would not be reasonable.
What are you considering the widening of the road?
I'm sorry?
What, what we're saying is a widening of the road so that there's the eighteen feet including the roadway, but to make, to be flexible in going around and saving trees. So...
I just wanted to address the, the point that the court, the courts have made just to respond to Mr. Fox's comment that he would have the ability to pave or do anything just because he has a right-of-way over the road.
So you're just limiting that right in that way?
Yes.
Not commenting on the plan that, that has been proposed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that we're ready to...
Chris Leffler.
Oh?
I, I just wanted to, to make one final comment. The lawyers in the room and whatnot, I kind of feel like I'm back in law school tonight. I, I agree with what the, the young lady just said. I don't, I think it's dangerous for this board to be making rulings relative to one person owns the dominant estate, one person owns the surveying estate, and just what's reasonable and what's reasonable by way of, you know, can my driveway go in this way or does it have to go in that way? I mean, those are things for courts, not really, really the board. I think the board has a much broader job here tonight, access to the, to the property. Yes, if, if there's a right-of-way, somebody owns it. But somebody else has a right to use it. And what's a reasonable use of it? I mean, we can all agree or we can disagree on that. That's why we have, that's why you have those cases that you're reading tonight. And I, and I agree with my sister that there are limits to, to, to what type of use we can, we can make of a right-of-way. I don't think it's completely reckless abandon here. But I, I don't think it's an area that the board wants to necessarily get into. These are issues between neighbors and so forth.
I believe we didn't get into it, but I do think that we are ready for a motion. Pat?
Okay, I move that Jed put together a decision for us to consider next week, that it incorporates Mr. McDonald's suggestions here, that it incorporates a statement to the effect that the board would not require before he starts building. I think this is what we discussed.
Right.
But rather that these would take effect before he gets an occupancy permit. So an occupancy permit would be dependent upon the satisfaction of these conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We're all set? Thank you. I know, it's been long, but it will help us in the future for other, other similar kinds of things. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
We have a really cooperative neighborhood. Okay, moving on. Are we ready to move forward?
I happened to the fifteen-minute meeting.
Moving forward. Right. Our next applicant in a public meeting, Milton Flores, has asked for a continuation. So we don't need to move that. We've already...
You can take action on it if you...
Okay, we do have to move it?
Well, we have to accept their request to, what would you call it? To extend the timeline on it. But in regard to that, also, I would ask that our last meeting that we can consider, this is March twenty-ninth. And so we might ask for an extension of the deadline.
Right, so our, our next meeting is March twenty-second. We figured the applicant would be back at that point. We would then discover whether or not, you know, you're going to make a decision on it. If so, we'd communicate a continuance or an extension to the, to the decision deadline.
Problem is that we don't do a decision the same night that we hear whatever they're going to propose. So I think it's...
Would be amenable to, would be amenable to an extension now if that would ease the board's concern.
Yes, that would ease my...
Of course.
Yeah.
Yep, no problem at all.
So you'll get that in in writing then, too?
I'll, I'll speak with Jed tomorrow. But yeah, we're perfectly okay with that.
Okay, then we're all set?
I think so.
Okay.
We have to have a motion that we accept their request for con...
We...
Extension.
And you're making that motion?
I certainly am.
Second? And we've heard a second. Everyone in favor of the extension?
Aye.
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 Next applicant. Darmel, is that right? Darmel Corporation on continuous site plan review, application to demolish and remove an existing single-family home and detach garage and to construct three duplex apartment buildings located four twenty-four East Falmouth Highway. You're accusing yourself? And I think that we got a new layout late this afternoon.
Yes, ma'am.
And we all have copies of it?
Sure. I don't believe it's a new layout. I think it just added some information that wasn't on the previous plan.
Yeah, there's been changes. Would you point out the changes? It looked the same to me.
I, I think the only change was the addition of the dimensions.
Oh, okay.
So there's, it's not a new plan. It just added the dimensions that the engineering department referred to.
Ah, thank you.
Just, just to be clear, that plan that you're showing, the, the board did not receive. They received the one that came in on the seventh.
Sure, okay, so I'm having...
Just the one before that.
Yep, okay. Did, and Tommy, send this one on?
Yes, I've received it.
I just wanted to make sure. For the record, good evening. My name's Kevin Clower. I'm here tonight representing Darmel Corporation. I'm joined by Deborah Drooly, president of that corporation. We're driving four twenty-four East Falmouth Highway. As was discussed, we are seeking site plan review approval for three new duplex residences, a total of six new units in addition to the existing mixed-use properties on the site. We went over all the pertinent facts, I think, at the last hearing. I don't want to belabor because I know that's, we've already been through an hour of, of hot topic debates. But following the first meeting, we did submit some additional information that the board had asked for. The engineering department did not have a chance to review it prior to the scheduled hearing. So we are continuing till tonight. But I believe that that information addressed the board's questions and concerns that came up at that first hearing. Provided drainage and grading information. Provided the parking information, which included an analysis of the existing uses and requirements as proposed. What's being proposed today, in addition to what exists, would require a total of eighty-one spots, which can be reduced by right to sixty-one, which is a twenty-five percent reduction. Currently, as built, there are sixty-eight spaces. And as proposed, there'll be a total of seventy-eight spaces. So we'll have parking well in excess of actually what's required. I believe that, that what we've submitted, again, addresses the questions and concerns that were raised by the board. And I'd be happy, along with Mr. Bunker, to address any questions that you might have.
Pat?
Okay, when I was looking at the plan that we have, not the one that's being shown up there, I thought, uh-oh, there's no access to the sidewalk there. A handicap access. Now, it looks like you've made one parking space maybe a little wider. I am not sure. But the top parking space that leads to the new condo units and the sidewalk. I don't know whether you lose one parking space since you have sufficient parking spaces or there's another way to do something there to give you an entrance that would accommodate a wheelchair and a ramp to go up to it. So you have ADA approval, approved.
I don't think, I don't think we'd have any opposition to making a modification of the...
I don't think so either. It's just a, a matter of, okay, there's a little change that needs to be made there.
To a point.
Madam Chair, for me?
Yeah.
Just to point out for clarification, the only difference between what Kevin is showing on the screen and what you have in your packets is just the label. He's referring to the dimensional label for the parking spot. He's actually circling it on the map now.
Showing the nine-foot width and eighteen-foot depth.
That is the only difference.
Yeah.
That's the change? Pat, would you point where you're talking about?
Okay, right here. See, there is the proposed sidewalks that access the duplexes. But you have no access to the sidewalk. These are all parking spaces there. If they're all six parked, how do you get to the sidewalk? So I looked at that. I thought, huh. All of a sudden, it hit me between the eyes. So we need to either lose one of these parking spaces and do access, ADA compliant access.
But they have, in excess of required, so they can do that.
Yeah, they can do that.
Correct.
They can do that.
They can make one of them a handicap spot with a, with the hatchway that everyone could walk, the roof and everything would be fine.
So Ms. Kerfe, I think, you know, just looking at the plan, just to use, because we have numbers, so try to make it helpful.
Sure.
It could be really any one of these, but just for the sake of our conversation, for instance, if spot six became the handicap spot.
Fine.
Spot five next to it had the, the...
The ramp.
With, the hatching.
Yeah.
You know, for, for wheelchair loading, unloading.
Yeah, so nobody could park there, that's the...
Yep, and that way you wouldn't, that way you wouldn't have the parking stanchion there.
Absolutely.
So you'd be able to access there. So that's a change we could certainly make.
Yeah.
And still have twelve spaces to accommodate the...
Yeah, it was an easy change. I didn't think it would cause anybody heartburn.
There's plenty of room for that.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Okay, any other comments?
Nope.
Nope. I like the plan.
Good plan. I like the plan, too. It's going to be nice.
Yeah, I think it, you know, we need housing. We need any housing we can get.
Right, right, for every...
Especially on already developed sites.
I still struggle with the address, because I think it's easier to get in from...
[laughing]
I think this shows, I think this shows the traffic flow a little better on this one without...
I think the DPW is going to pick that.
I think they should rip up the pavement and put a ten-foot wide dirt road in there.
Man, we can do twelve. I don't know.
And then plant lots of trees.
Okay, so we're ready?
Madam Chair, if I may? On the backside of the latest engineering review, there's a few comments in purple that it may be helpful to just go through them.
Oh, okay.
And decipher which ones, you know, are important. I think when it comes to, we were just talking about accessible parking spots. The site itself, because of the number of spots, really should have at least four accessible parking spots, so if there could be accommodations made, perhaps at building number three, in front of building number three and building number two, is that something that could be accommodated? You won't lose any of the total parking?
Jed, do the applicants have a copy of this?
Yes, yes. They did receive it late this afternoon, so it's not...
It's not necessarily depicted on the plan, but this spot here, the furthest one to the left, this actually is a handicap spot with a ramp here.
Okay.
Okay, and then there's one all the way up the front, that's two, and we're talking three, so that'd be one more you'd have to add.
Up the back, below the toe, or the center?
Yep.
Oh, I see one right here. Yep, that's there, right. There it is, one, two.
There we go, we got four, we got four.
Right.
You got them?
We have a winner.
Okay, we're just going to go through the bullets here. If you've got a copy of this, Kevin, do you want to comment on them as...
Sure, I'd be happy to run through them, Ms. Harris, if you'd like.
Yeah.
So bullet point one says the total existing parking spaces count does not appear to be correct. I think we did go through and counted, it's, it's on the plan.
It's easy to do, okay.
Yeah, it will change, you know, minor, in a minor manner, once we eliminate two of those, no, you're going to show that, so we're eliminating one space, but yes, we'll make sure that the count is correct on the revised plan. Two forty, fourteen point one F allows reduction by right for retail, business, and professional uses. The reduction calculations appear to include the residential uses. Tom did revise that, so the reduced requirement of sixty-one spaces does not reduce the residential spaces. That's only a reduction of the retail and commercial uses.
Yeah, okay.
Reserve area for the parking space reduction isn't shown in the plans. I think historically, when we've done parking space reductions, we've shown that you could accommodate the total number of spots and then allow for a reduction. I mean, here, we're showing that we have effectively the number that's required anyways.
Right.
So I don't think it's a real concern. The parking spaces in drive aisle have no dimensions. That was revised here.
That's been corrected.
Drive aisles appear to be less than the required, twenty-four feet wide. I assume he's referring to the existing parking that we're not really adjusting here, so, because I believe this is twenty-four feet wide. The two parallel parking spaces appear to be less than the twenty-three feet required, which I believe would be these two spaces here, but again, those are just existing spaces that aren't being changed.
Right, and they're existing.
In a manner. There doesn't appear to be enough accessible parking spaces shown in the plans, and appear to be one in front of building three that is not accounted for on the plans, which we've discussed.
You're right.
Off-street loading appears to occur behind building one. It isn't clear if there was a loading area required and provided for the restaurant in building three. In speaking with the applicants, building three really doesn't receive box truck deliveries. Deliveries are really occurring by much smaller vehicles, vans typically. So there is no part, loading area per se, but I also don't feel as though we need one and we're not modifying that building or use. And bicycle racks are not shown on the plan. You know, I spoke, we spoke today, if, if the board felt strongly, we could add a bicycle rack, you know, somewhere in the screen space as an alternative. You know, there was a mention of perhaps going to EV plugs as an option further down the road as the site continues to be redeveloped. That's something that the applicant would certainly be willing to consider. I think there are ways that, you know, I don't know that a bicycle rack is necessarily, is necessary in this area. This is not an area where you have a lot of bike traffic. It's along, you know, busiest road in town. So...
Things change, though.
I don't think it's going to get less busy.
But they have room in the green areas to put a bike...
Yeah, I think there's plenty of room to put bike racks. I just want to comment on that. In the past, we've had people say that, oh, no one ever rides bikes on Route twenty-eight, and then about three years later, there was all these students coming and renting these hotels, and they're riding these bikes up and down Route twenty-eight just a few years later. So that's what I mean. There's room to put bike things, you should put them in.
Well, and there's a very active transportation and bicycle committee.
Yeah.
Right, so we need to consider their needs.
Particularly put them where the condos are.
Yeah, back, there's got to be room.
So what I would suggest is if we are required to have, I think, you know, just aesthetically, putting them up against the backside, towards the backside of this building here would make the most sense.
Great. Can I have a question?
Yeah.
Last time I questioned whether there was dumpsters, do I see dumpsters located on this plan? Is that what those, all those?
You got one here, you got, you got, you got four, five over here, so we got six dumpsters.
Okay, fine, I see them now. I don't think I saw, I didn't notice them the last time. You got plenty.
Plenty of dumpsters.
Lots. Any other questions, comments?
Well, I think I would just come back to the whole drive aisle thing. I understand that the parking lot is existing, it's, it's been there before, but, you know, you can clearly see a pinch point where those parallel parking spots are and the cars that are, or potentially backing out of those spots in the, just to the, to the east of them. I wonder if perhaps, if those parallel spots are not used or not popular in any way, that they could be eliminated and you could just open up that sort of choke point there so that you can maintain that drive aisle.
There are, my only concern with eliminating that as parking is there are three units above that building, so having parking closer to the building is obviously preferable. What I was just told is those spots are typically used really at night when people are staying overnight, not so much during the day. Could we eliminate them? Yeah, I think theoretically we could. I think our preference would be not to. That's how that site has existed for quite some time. You know, I'm not going to tell you there's never been an incident. I don't know that there's never been an incident, but I don't believe it's a chronic issue. So we'd prefer to keep those if we can, but if, if the board felt strongly, I'm sure we could eliminate them and... But I think, you know, the preference obviously would be to have parking as close to that building as possible, because you do have those units upstairs.
Anyone feel strongly about requiring those? No.
No.
Well, I'm, I'm only, we're going to, parking's really important, and we're going to, this site is lucky, it has a lot of parking.
Yeah.
We got to remember, we have other sites where we've gone back and forth, back and forth, back and forth on parking. Is there a solution? Could it be compact parking only on the other side? Is there, is there any way that could be accommodated so we're not overriding this, this drive angle? Because I think once we do that, that twenty-four feet's important, not so much maybe for this one, because they have tons of parking.
But for this unique circumstance, where it's been working for a long time...
Right, that's what I'm saying, find a compromise.
So what I would say, Mr. Fox, is if we were trying to lay that out today, I would absolutely agree with you that that shouldn't be the case. However, we're not proposing any changes to that building. And I think what we're doing is making the site much better from a parking perspective. I think that the issue with saying, if we agree to say it's compact cars only, is how does that get enforced? You know, we put up signs saying compact cars only, you know, but I think, I think realistically, would, you know, we'd prefer to leave those spaces there. If, if the board, again, wanted it to be compact cars only for that purpose, sure, I think we could agree to that, but I don't know that it has any real merit.
Is there anyone else who agrees with Jim and we ought to insist on this?
I'm not saying we insist on it, I'm just questioning, we went through a building on Main Street where they're trying to do parking in restaurants, and we talked about the same exact thing. Not have, you know, not, not counting parking in the same spot you keep a dumpster or the same spot in the twenty-four aisle way. And maybe we don't have to address it because that's, the scope of the work we're looking for is all in the back. Maybe that's the solution to it. I was just commenting on what Jed said's important.
Pat?
Not so much for this, but for what we're going forward and how we deal with this parking lane.
Okay, but right now, we're considering this.
Another way of looking at it, and that we have as a board policy, if we possibly can, in parking is shared parking. And they have said that those two parking spaces are principally used at night for the residents above. So in a way, you can look at it as it's a shared parking. They don't use it until the night, so it wouldn't cause the kind of problem there.
I don't think we needed to label it one way or another. Policy practice, whatever. Just accept that it's true, it's been that way, and it's working.
I'm okay, as an abundance of parking on the site, I think we overpark. I was just trying to deal with our rules.
Yeah, okay.
Just a suggestion. So it sounds like the board is not concerned about that.
No. Or yes, you're right.
So we're good to go with a decision?
We're good to go. We're ready for a decision, so if you could please draft one that approves this situation?
Sure.
And bring it up at our next meeting, and we'll be all set to go.
We'll have a revised plan showing that additional handicap parking space submitted prior to that hearing, so we'll have that in hand for that.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. This business about precedent?
I was just trying to be respectful with my mask, and I can't take it off. I see everybody else is unmasked. We had such great, sunny weather here in Falmouth the last month, I thought my tan line would show.
Not to worry. The governor said we could do this.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good project. Okay, now, planning board discussion. Paul has put in a lot of heavy duty on the transportation committee. Could you please tell us what's going on?
May I go to the podium?
Yes.
We, I have to do a committee report, and I actually prepared something for the several committees I represent behalf of the planning board. And as I've been told by Mr. Cornoch, that the agenda says transportation, so I'm going to only concentrate on the transportation committee, and I'd like to come back next meeting and talk about the other committees.
Would you first, Paul, name your committees?
Sorry?
Would you name your committees?
I'm the representative to the transportation committee, water quality management committee, cost of resiliency. And then although it's not a town committee, it involves the town planner, is the Chiricke Spawn Trail.
Right, and tell me, the, the bike committee, is that part of the transportation committee?
The which?
The biking.
I'm not a representative of the bike committee.
Okay.
They're represented on the transportation committee quite heavily.
So the answer to your question is no, they're separate committees?
They're separate. Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. See what this is about? It's not working.
Use the mouse.
Okay, very quickly, created by Select Board back in October of two thousand nineteen, there were five members plus four others. At the present time, we only have seven members, and we're missing one person. The committee's name was changed to Traffic Committee by the Select Board, because the committee does not do management, and they made no changes at that time to the scope of work or the mission statement. And mission statement generally says this, review and analyze transportation system, identify issues, propose solutions, coordinate relations with other Cape Towns, review the master plan, and compare an annual report and other items requested by the Select Board. So it's fairly generic. And the committee identified a series of issues that they wanted to address. Downtown parking was a big issue. A report was submitted in January two thousand twenty-one. There was a public meeting in January of this year. It was quite interesting, because a lot of the, the business community liked the congestion downtown, and they felt it was good for business, that if you eliminated all that, made one-way street, it took away parking, it would actually hinder the businesses. So they had a very different perspective than what we were talking about initially. Complete Streets Program is a program that the town has adopted, and the Cape Cod Commission came out with a prioritization report in January of this year that listed fifty projects that are eligible for funding in the town of Falmouth. It was very heavily influenced by the Bike and Medestrian Committee Report. That was a very good report done by the Cape Cod Commission. Another issue was Steamship Authority truck traffic, and that's been in ongoing discussions with the Steamship Authority and the, and the Southern Massachusetts, I forget what they call it, Southern Massachusetts. It's a private group based in Woods Hole, talking about a lot of traffic issues on southeastern Massachusetts. The issue came up about the embarkation fee of the town. There's embarkation fee of fifty cents of every passenger that goes to the state, and the state in turn gives it to the town, and it was put into a separate fund, but it was not being utilized except for a decision that was made many years ago, where the small portion went for police and fire. And there is an amount, about a million dollars is in that fund that has not been used. So the committee's been pushing to try to get access to it and find out what policies are needed to recommend the use of those funds. Directional signage and weigh finding, that's considered a very important item, because a lot of people don't know how to get from one place to the other. It's not identified businesses, but if you get off the bike path, you can go downtown or go somewhere else. And then pavement management came up by the, by the committee, and the DPW, Director of DPW, addressed all those issues. He spent quite a bit of time addressing every single item that would be done in pavement management, and felt that eighty percent of the work is being done in-house, so that was sort of sidelined.
Does that mean potholes?
Sorry?
Is pavement management potholes?
Is it?
Potholes, filling in the potholes? That's what it...
Well, town of Lexington has a program using pavement management, and they have a consultant come in, they analyze all the streets and come up with a plan on what do you plan first, how do you do it, and, and those kinds of things, all kinds of techniques that they would use to implement a pavement management program, and allegedly would save a considerable amount of money in the future. So the town was not particularly interested in that, and the Director of Public Works said he's doing most of the work anyway, so it, that's where it is. The other issue being considered by the committee is the freight traffic and schedule, implement complete streets program. One of the members of the committee has gotten approval of a article in town meeting to put in some of money for some issues that might be able to complete streets. put in some of money for some issues that might be able to complete streets. For example, if there's a project ready to go and it didn't consider complete streets, that money theoretically could be available to be used. Electronic signage downtown, in fact, this is gonna be discussed Thursday at the meeting with the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority. The policy for using the embarkation fee, that's a request that was done, there was some concern about that and so some request on what the policy is to actually use that, that money. They're pushing to get a reconstitute of Route 28 Advisory Committee. I'm not sure where it is right now, but there's some interest in doing that. The pavement management I mentioned and grant writing and management issues, a lot of the concerns raised by the town is if you get a grant, how are you gonna implement the grant and what the issues are to, to control the grant, how much effort is gonna be done by staff by having additional grants? I think that can be worked out, but it's something that's working. Another issue recently came up is stormwater management issues in Falmouth where the chairman is suggesting that the committee look at the stormwater issues. Personally, I'm not in favor of that because DPW does that if it's a private property. We work with DPW on drainage, make sure it stays on the property and I'm not sure that's part of our scope of work, but that's being, being discussed. And concerned about construction and bridge schedules, the governor came out, not the governor, our representative came out, Keating, and said it's gonna be done in five years, so I don't know. That's pretty ambitious. How it affects the planning board, I think is an important issue. Like hear comments on the different proposed activities by the members of this board on what they think about some of the things that are being done. The complete streets program, I think we need to have some input into that because it affects not only bike issues, but also intersections and a lot of other issues in town. And the discussion Davis Straits and potential parking issues has been raised several times by the committee and I've tried to address it by indicating that at this time, the consultant has not provided any information on Davis Straits to the working group and the working group has not provided it to the board, so it would be premature to really discuss that. But I think that's being driven by the bikeway committee because they had heard parking on Main Street and got very worried about that. And it even came up tonight, someone mentioned it tonight, so to me, Davis Straits is a development project that's unique to Falmouth, it's not a transportation project. And Route 28 is gonna be dictated by the state anyway because it's a state highway. So it's being raised as a potential project and the chairman of bikeways committee not only has addressed this with his town planner, but also with one of the members of the board. That's it.
I have a question.
Pat?
I'm not sure what is meant by electronic signage downtown that will be done in conjunction with the CTA. What is electronic signage that we're talking about?
Well, talk about having a sign to say that the, there's a small sign that tells you what time the bus is coming or when the next bus would be coming. It's been used in other areas, so they're at least talking about it. And Tom Caher is gonna come and talk about what they're trying to do on the, the regional group.
Okay, 'cause my thought was, we as a board wanted to stay away from this electronic signage kind of thing for businesses on Main Street and I just don't know, that's why I'm bringing the question up.
It's just the beginning of discussion. I mean, the committee felt strongly that we needed more signage in town. People don't know where to park, for example. And a good example is the town got an agreement with Cape Cod Bank, Vineyard Bank, to use that extended property there for parking and now they have a sign showing you where you can park there. And there's some discussion with different places like the church on where they could use parking during the summer and things like that. To me, I'd like to see the trail on Shiverick's Pond done and have parking on Lawrence School and walk along a nice trail to downtown, but there's a number of issues like that that they're dealing with. There's a potpourri of things going on, there's a lot of activities and a lot of interest on the committee.
Well, Paul, is it safe to assume that you are sharing with them the planning board's position at the point that we have one and we have one on electronic signage, that you would tell them that that's something we've been trying to avoid?
Well, I try to represent the planning board at those meetings.
Right, I'm not sure they're always gonna listen, but, but you're there.
Yeah. But I think it's a pretty active group, they're doing an awful lot, raising a lot of issues. There's been some issues with town administration that, but that's normal with any kind of committee and we're working through those.
Any other questions? Well, I thank you very much for your service.
Just a quick question on the electronic sign. Were you, I thought, was that, would that be limited to transport, bus transportation issues saying when the buses are coming or what do you mean, or how far is electronic signs going, you know, I mean, what's the scope of that?
Tune in Thursday, I don't know. That's what we're gonna talk about Thursday.
Because we, that's important.
Yeah.
It's probably the-
Is it the big signs or is it a kiosk or?
A little kiosk saying the bus comes in 10 minutes, I mean, I'm, I work on Main Street and knowing when the bus comes is really important for a lot of people. And, and if, and if the RTA's got a program, it, I mean, that's really important to transportation people, a bus is coming in five minutes, that's really important to do.
But, but bus signs are usually handled by a small sign.
That's what I'm talking about, maybe they-
Is that electronic?
Yeah, yeah, small electronic.
Well, but not electronic.
No, they, I'm saying that they can actually update them right now, that they're live, the data comes, the bus is coming. That's what the new technology is, they send it out by your phone, there, there's all kinds of new electronic ways to communicate quickly.
You can actually track the bus on a map on your phone.
Yeah.
It's pretty cool.
And a little map downtown might work, it might not be offensive to, it needs to be considered as it relates to transportation on the bus.
One final comment, Cape Cod Commission report on the priority projects, the 50 projects, frankly, it's not very clear to me what the fundamental criteria was used. They used a lot of different reports and things and I was asked, or I asked, what, can you add projects to it? And the deadline is August, is April 1st, I believe. So if you wanna add a project for consideration of funding, you gotta get that in. And just last week, I wrote a letter to the Cape Cod Commission suggesting a small project in Falmouth and I raised this when they had the meeting with McMahon Associates when they did the master plan report. What about the Dillingham Road Extension going up to the school, Lawrence School? And they said, oh, nobody uses it. Well, they use it every day. As a matter of fact, speaking with the principal of Lawrence School, Mr. Bushy, he said they're up to 100 cars come every day and the only way to drop off the kids is coming up Dillingham Road Extension, go the loop, drop the kids off. In the afternoon, they do the same thing, 180 days a year, twice a day, so it's frequently used. It's not in very good shape, there's potholes and the culvert between Weeks Pond and Shiverick's Pond has failed. The Lawrence School thinks it's a high priority, it provides access to school, the sidewalks are not there, there are enough, excuse me, a number of reasons why that should be included. So I raised that as an individual, not as planning board or anything else, because that's a project I think should, should have consideration. It's not expensive, the town can do it very easily according to Mr. Peter McConaughey, but there's a project that's sitting there, it can be done, it's less than a thousand feet long, so it's not a big deal. But there are other projects, so if anybody has any project, now's the time to suggest it because if it's not in the list, it may not be funded.
Are you asking the planning board to support your recommendation?
No, not necessarily, it's just an update. You know, I don't, I wasn't sure you were even interested.
Did I hear you say there's a million dollars in unused funds?
In the-
Steamship Authority.
Embarkation fee, there is a million dollars sitting in the special account. So, there've been a couple of requests to use it, for example, speed signs going down to Woods, along Woods Hole Road and doing things like that, but the request of the committee is to get a policy and find out how you would implement some of those funds. The intent of it is to mitigate the issues of not only steamship, but the other ferries in town. And at the present time, what the agreement years ago was to take a small sum and put it for fire and police because they had additional services. And that was approved by town meeting, but no one has addressed it since then, so the committee is pushing that, trying to work with the town and see how you might be able to use some of those funds.
Pat has a suggestion.
I do.
Yeah.
Paul said he did that suggestion as a private citizen for the improvement of that roadway. Might I suggest and make that the planning board suggests or supports his request, get a little bit more oomph behind it?
Yeah.
Have a second?
You making a motion?
Second.
I did, I made a motion.
And it's been seconded then?
What's the motion?
To support officially your request for the funding to do that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Because they should do that.
Yes.
And that would, that would be number 51, because we all had an opportunity to complete the survey and I suppose we all did on what our priorities would be.
Well, there's a lot of projects there, some are, a lot of bike projects because they were taken from there, but there's a lot of other projects like intersections and different things like that. For example, there's one at, I think the intersection of, of Gifford Street and what's the one from Hospital Lights coming down? Improvements to that intersection, for example, is one that's on there and there's several others too. There's some good projects.
There's some excellent projects.
And there's some very expensive projects too. For example, a very high priority is to extend the bike path up to Bourne. And while that's a very admirable thing, but you gotta put a bridge in and you know the cost of doing that, you can probably do a dozen other projects, so it has a relatively high priority, but whether that would fall out, I don't know. But if it's not in the list, you're not eligible for funding. So we were trying to get this, or I was trying to get this small project included, so it would be eligible because I think it's important.
Well, I hope the board's support really helps with that.
And what I didn't mention is that it's even worse than that because Mullen Hall School queues up in that area and when they're ready to drop the kids off, so they're not on Catholic Base Road, they come around, drop the kids off, in the afternoon, they do the same thing. So the whole area becomes a queuing area for both schools.
Yeah.
180 days a year, four times a day.
And it's kids. Paul, thank you for putting in all the hours on that committee. The rest of us are really glad for that.
Let me see if I understand, the board supports it, you, you interested in writing a letter to, to Madeiros?
Yes.
I've already got it half-written.
If you wanna- Share your letter with Jen, that would be good.
I've already got it.
Well, I'll do, I'll share my letter with all of you. I'll give it to Jed and he can, you have it.
I do.
You have it, so he could share that with you. But before sending it, I spoke with Peter McConaughey and he was very much in favor of it and suggested I copy the town engineer, which I did. And of course, I, my advisor here got a copy of it, but he can share that with you. I think it makes sense.
So our vote will just put a little bit more oomph behind it, I hope.
I would hope.
We hope, right, well, we'll see if it does.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we have a couple of other things we need to discuss. Determination of access policy, we certainly discussed it earlier. John, you had requested that this be here. Did you wanna say something about it?
Well, I think that the way it was written originally is kind of not working out. Two owners or what, it's a great concept, it just doesn't seem to be practical for the applicants we've been seeing.
Of course, we should change the name, the guidelines, the policy, right?
Yeah, does, does anyone have a problem with that?
No, I already crossed it.
Okay, great.
So that, that kinda takes away the inflexibility of it right there.
Right. So that, that will help and it's possible that in addition to the determination of access policy, we'd wanna look at the other, you all got a copy, I think, of this policies and procedures, if you couldn't find it among all the, your own files to take a look at. I was thinking that with John's suggestion, the rewrite on the determination of access to update it to what we've discussed tonight and look at the rest of them and bring it back as a whole recommendation to the board? Just have a subcommittee, our subcommittee seemed to be working pretty well. Who would like to work on that subcommittee? Who is willing to work on that subcommittee? Okay, I am, is there anyone else willing? This is for the determination of access? It's the planning board policies and procedures, would review them all with particular attention to the determination of, of access and bring it back to the board to take a look at so that it's not so cumbersome and it actually accords with the authorities of the board rather than overreaching. We're not getting a lot of volunteers here.
Committee of one.
Mostly my plate's full.
Can I make a comment on this?
Yeah.
I don't see the height of the road. We talked a lot about cutting trees, but I don't see that in this determination.
Right. And yet we've been acting as if it's there.
As an alternative, if you'd like, I can, I can start to provide edits, potential edits for both of these policies.
And just discuss it as a group, that, that might be better.
Is that better?
Put time in our meeting to do it together. I don't wanna take any private, I got enough time, but we can do it together.
I think the height clearance is important.
Absolutely.
Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
I can work with you if you want.
Sure.
Yeah, we can go over it and then bring it back.
I do all my work on Saturdays, are you free on Saturdays? No, I'm kidding.
On Sunday, don't forget Sundays. It's amazing that the town pays you seven days a week, I am really impressed.
Well, they pay me seven days a week too.
John?
But it appears that, like, the minimum should be what the fire department is required, because that's what we-
Start with them, yeah.
That's what we've been using as a guideline.
But what the fire department really does is they go there and they take a look and they come back with their recommendation. So it's case by case with the fire department. So it's not a number printed anywhere, it's their being on site and then making their recommendation. So we wouldn't have to begin with, well, it should be 18 feet or whatever.
Okay.
Right.
And we still have the right to waive anything and it should be out of discretion in that I think we should try and do the minimal amount of changes to something.
Right.
These are gonna be coming before us over and over and over again and if we decided to change all of these, it's gonna drastically change the character of the town.
Yep.
I just wanna say for a warning, okay, Massachusetts 40B is a law that overrides any town-made rules. And so what these attorneys wanna do, as soon as they get a determination of access, they're home free, they could, we could say in a subdivision, well, there's no, we decided there can't be no more lots in this subdivision because that's our, our home rule, we don't want any more lots. But once we determine it has proper access, 40B, they could come flying in and do whatever they want, they go by the state rules and not the town rules. We've seen that happen.
We have.
So that is the only caveat I have about, oh, let's let these nine and a half foot quaint country roads go.
We're all feeling burned by Lewis neck and, and we're still feeling that.
It can happen again, is what I'm afraid of.
Yeah, and, you know, we just, I think, you gotta take that risk.
Okay.
It's a good caution, but what saves us is it's case by case by case by case.
I think the uniqueness of every street should go in the guidelines.
I think so too.
The word uniqueness needs to be in there, that, that gives some hope for this area. I don't think any of these lots could, could work, you know, up there, that someone's not gonna take one of those big pieces of land and try to put 30 units on it or something, that's what-
I think the simplest solution to the one we just had was make it one-way. You know, you just come down and, and make a loop, it's a loop.
It would've been.
It would've been.
Did you drive it? Did you go up and drive that road?
No, I haven't driven it.
You would not want that to be one-way. If I were on the east side by the highway and was told that I'm going to have to go up the west side where you go practically straight uphill and then over a terrible road to get back down, I wouldn't do it.
There's one spot, Bob, that the, right away goes between the guy's house and his garage.
Oh, yeah?
The garage is on the other side, so it's, it's like, did the planning board really approve that? I don't think so, I think that garage just got there somehow.
It got there somehow in the dark. I, I think at least one, probably more people, members of the planning board need to go out and drive these roads before we, before we make a decision. You really, they are unique, they are, and this road has a lot of unique problems.
That unique road would ruin my car.
Yes.
That's why I'm not doing it.
And I'm impressed that people backed down 500 feet around all those corners.
That guy, in fact, the person whose land is, they're trying to build the driveway across, it was him. He, he, he's the one that backed all the way up to let us get by.
And he waved to us.
And he waved to us, like, come on in. It was amazing.
I had to.
So you guys went together?
I went, I went on a site visit, I had to do that too. I had to back all the way up.
No.
It just is.
The woman in my life doesn't back up, her car doesn't, she can't do it very well. If she was on that street, we'd have to take that into consideration.
That's me too.
I know.
Shouldn't ever let you buy up there.
Well, if you make it one-way, how would you enforce that private road?
I'm just joking, I'm not really mean, sorry.
Wait, this, this meeting is deteriorating.
Yeah, well, we gotta have a little fun tomorrow.
Adam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
There's just one item on the planning board policies and procedures which I wanted to just bring to everyone's attention and that's the reason why I suggested having it, was on page, I believe it's page two, under the regulatory matters.
Yeah.
Item C. And it, and it says, all applications or applicants must have plans into the planning office by 3:00 PM Thursday before the Tuesday meeting.
You wanted to move that- You wanted to move that back.
Yeah, so that's what we were thinking. And so, you know, obviously, we'll bring back some comments, but, you know, just talking with engineering today, their suggestion is to do a week before the meeting. So instead of the Thursday, the Tuesday. And that gives us enough time to receive it, send it, get it back, get it to you folks so you can consider it, and then you can have all that information for Tuesday meeting.
Right, and we won't have all these last-minute things.
Yeah.
This is our opportunity to make those improvements.
Yeah.
But I wonder... I know I talked to Jen about this, too, because there are certain ones, like ADUs, that don't necessarily have to have that space and time. Like, a three o'clock on Thursday would be sufficient to get it to us to look at for the Tuesday meeting. Or do we want to have more time for even ADUs?
I'd make it a uniform rule. It'll be easier to enforce. Okay, that would be mine.
In our practice, ADUs have been very easy to go through and to analyze. So it's not necessarily about that easy.
Yeah.
Bear on me.
Okay. We've been through our discussion items. Are there any announcements? Paul?
I have one. For the three ladies on the board, happy International Women's Day.
Thank you.
Why, thank you. Thank you very much.
It's a...
I assume the other gentlemen agree?
I agree.
It's a very, very big day overseas. If I showed up in the office without flowers for the women in my office, I would really be in trouble. So it's a big, big deal overseas. Not so much here, but in any case, happy International Women's Day.
Women's Day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd have to say, we're the first.
Were women even out of the country?
When I was in college, I was the program, student programs director, and one of the programs I instituted back in nineteen eighty or eighty-one was Women's Week.
A whole week?
Wow.
That'd be today, when we get flowers all week.
Every day.
So we had a bunch of programs geared towards women, so...
Come on.
Yeah.
You're way ahead of your time.
That was forty years ago.
Yeah. And we still don't have the Equal Rights Amendment.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
You can thank a woman in Texas for that. It was, she was the one that kiboshed that.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
That's not a good state. Correspondence.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a few announcements.
Oh, you have announcements?
I do. Just recently, in fact, last week, we heard back from the Attorney General's Office, and Mr. Cod was approved as presented.
Wow, that's big.
That is big.
The mixed residential and commercial overlay district. That was approved by the Attorney General.
Remember, we are trying to stop saying Mr. Cod. At least, I thought that was a group... We did decide that one time.
We did decide that.
But it's so cute.
But it's really hard to stop.
I know, but the public doesn't know what we're talking about when we do it.
You're right.
I think it's insider jargon, and no one else knows but us.
That's a big deal.
It's not transparent.
How do we get that out to the general public?
Callie Remillard, who is following our... Callie Remillard has been assigned to us by the enterprise to follow what we do, and she will help with that, to say that the mixed residential and commercial district has been approved by the Attorney General, no changes. So just as town meeting accepted and unapproved it, so has the Attorney General, so it is now in effect.
It'd be kind of sweet if she did a short summary of it.
Right, if she did that. And isn't it also true that an owner of property is interested?
Yes, yep. Preliminary interest has already come through, yeah.
Right.
I would think the family enterprise would be very interested in this as a significant article.
I would think so, too. I hope so.
I don't know if they have a reporter viewing this, but unless...
They do. They do. Her name is Callie Remillard, and she's very interested in what we do and very cooperative in what she is willing to publicize.
She writes good articles.
Yeah.
I've got to tell you that we worked... Well, you were... You're on the committee, too, but the hardest thing we had dealing with that is people kept telling us, "You can't do it. It's illegal. You can't do it. You can't do it." And we found a way to do it.
Right.
And it's... Congratulations to my other committee members. We worked on that a long time. How many times have we told we couldn't do that?
Every time we met.
Yep. A lot of people said, "Oh, you just can't do it." And we did it.
Well, and John was the engine, getting it going. And then we had a bigger committee, and I want to also name here Eric Turkey.
Eric Turkey was a big part of it.
Who was at every meeting.
He helped us find the solution.
Yep, he did.
He did. He was very, very helpful.
But I believe it was John's persistence got us to where we are right now.
Well, the whole board supported us, so it was a good thing. It is a good thing.
It is an excellent thing.
It lays excellent groundwork for Davis Straits. That's really the foundation of the whole Davis Straits thing, is doing that zoning.
Well, but it's time, I think, for the Davis Straits people to make a report to the board so that we can hear what's going on there.
We've got a couple more meetings. We haven't had a meeting in a while.
Yeah, we haven't heard back from them. We're actually working through a contract extension so that we can give them a little bit more time to put together the illustration.
Iron out a few issues, and then we'll be ready.
Yeah.
I think we need probably two more meetings with the consultants, and we should be ready to go for a report.
Okay, well, we don't... This is a very fulsome report that Paul has made, but just letting us know where you are is a good thing. So, okay, there'd be that.
I'm not sure we know where we are right now.
Well, they're still working. They're tweaking the draft language for the actual bylaw itself, based on all of the comments that the working group gave to them. And in addition to that, putting together the illustrations, because words are helpful, but pictures are better.
Yeah, form-based zoning needs the forms.
So they're putting all that together, and that final form will come to us sometime soon. But like I said, we're working through an extension to give them a little bit more time and a little bit more funding to get us through the finish line, so...
Okay, so you're thinking, like, April?
In terms of getting it deliverable, we don't know yet, but we are extending their contract into June to give them plenty of extra time.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay, did you have another announcement?
I did. I had several, if I may. So recodification, although still in the Attorney General's office, they asked for a sixty-day extension. So they're going to have a few... A little bit more time to go through that entire bylaw. Once that's all finished, then Mr. Cod will get integrated into the new bylaw, and he'll have a new numbering system, as well as the site plan review modifications that were approved at town meeting, as well as the definitions. So all that's sort of to come in the next sixty days. The other element that, you know, the planning staff's been working on is the recodification phase two. So we had our first meeting, we met with the BOMs, we've gone through some of the matrix comments, prioritized some of the elements, and so we're looking forward to that second meeting where we start, where the rubber hits the road, if you will, start prioritizing exactly what we're going to be working on for bringing to town meeting in the spring.
Could I add to that? The... A decision was made... The meeting that we had was the first meeting for the second phase. And our entire agenda for the day was to just set priorities and a timeline. And the timeline is we're going to do the easy ones, the low-hanging fruit in the fall town meeting, and the others for the spring if we can. So that's what we're trying to do. But I think the important decision that was made was to take that matrix of all the things that turned out going through phase one. One of the things that the subcommittee kept doing is saying, "This is more than just a tweak. This is actually a change." That will be phase two. And our consultants kept track of all of that, and now have turned it into a matrix of where are all the phase-two issues? And the issues fall into two main types. One type is just a drafting thing, where it needs to be updated to state law, do that, where it needs to be renumbered, do that. Where we actually left it out, passed by town meeting but didn't make it into the print copy, fix that. So sort of a correction in errors and things that are drafting issues, no question. Then there are the things that are actually... They're not big policy questions, but they are policy kinds of changes to do those as a secret batch. So right now, the consultants are separating them out, so we will want... We, the board, will wind up with a list, drafting items, policy items. Rather than using up our limited consulting money on the policy items, it was decided that the whole board, as part of these discussion items at the end of a meeting, will look at them then, so that we can discuss them all together and then give it to the consultants to draft, instead of using their time to find out what we think.
Sounds good.
Is that okay with you?
That sounds good.
So in effect, you've just become part of phase two. Very much so. Beyond just, you know, approving it in the end, discussing the items that actually need discussion.
More announcements?
I don't know.
I have a question. Do you know who the new town manager is in board?
Yes.
Yeah, we do. It's Maureen.
Maureen. That's what I thought I heard that announcement. That's her, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's amazing.
Right, right.
She's out of the running for town planning here.
Right.
She's got a better job, a bigger job, I think.
Well, it's what she's been working toward.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. For more?
The only last thing is that the staff is working on the growth incentive zone application for the Cape Cod Commission for Mr. Cod. So that is phase two of... I'm sorry, the mixed residential and commercial overlay district. That will allow for reduced review by the Cape Cod Commission, if they approve us, so that applicants don't have to go through that second step with the Cape Cod Commission review.
And this was a planned step, and now we're taking it.
Correct. So staff is currently working on that.
Did you want to update us on the search for a town planner?
The search continues.
Yes. Maureen had been one of the applicants. The other applicant... Two jobs have to be found for that person, himself and his wife, and that's not going to happen quickly. They are going to be reposting, so we are continuing with Jen.
Yep.
Which is nice. Right.
We're in good hands.
I believe so, yes. Okay. So the future agenda items, then. Oh, yeah? Paul?
Wayne Lingefell talked to me for EDIC, Executive Director, and we had him set up for a meeting last month, and he asked to pull it off. He contacted me, and I suggested he write to the chair directly, which he's done. So he's looking to have an informal presentation of what they're planning to do at the station. They have a consultant came up with a couple of options, and he's been going around to different groups, trying to encourage people to look at what they're trying to do. I emphasize it's informal because it's not before us for a decision, but he's wanting to do that with several groups. So there's some issues I think we may want to weigh in on.
Have you all?
I made a recommendation to him that I think that he probably wasn't aware of. That we, through the Davis Straits and with Cape Cod Commission, we spent a long time surveying on what the town likes for multifamily buildings and the way they look at. And I think that they designed a building without taking any consideration of what all the studies that we have already done, and he wasn't even aware of it. And I said, "You've got to go on the Cape Cod Commission and get those things," because we spent a year or two in getting all kinds of surveys of what people south of want, and he's... That's what they're fighting. People don't like what they're... The way the buildings look, and they should use the designs.
Right, and that... I think that comes up frequently, and he's probably aware of it. But we were not before it.
He wasn't aware of it when I brought it up.
I think it's a good reason to come before the board and give him some additional information. I think that's a perfect example of why...
He didn't know anything about it.
Yeah.
We'll have that opportunity.
No, I did. I brought it up to him personally already, so he knows about it now.
Has everyone seen what they're proposing up there at the station? Okay, it's on EDIC's website. You can take a look at it. It's three- and four-stories buildings, flat roofs, very contemporary-looking. You're probably going to think exactly what Jim thinks, and I think, as soon as you see it. But it brings up something really worth discussing, and that is micro-units. Are you familiar with micro-units?
Yep.
And dormitory-style building? We don't have the zoning for it, but we might want it. Think what that would do. So it'll be our first opportunity to really look at any... Not for its aesthetics, but as a concept, and react to it. Paul?
Yeah, just in summary, they presented three options. One was a park up there with a circular area. If they're looking to make money, I don't know how the park's going to do it. The other one was to have one workforce housing building to the north of the station. And the other one was to put down three very large buildings in a lower area, reroute the buses and everything else. And it was a very large development.
Eighty-seven units.
Yeah, and there's a group going around. They've gotten five hundred signatures opposing some portions of that. So it's not... There is some opposition out there. I was asked to sign, and I said, "I'm not going to get involved, because it's going to come before the planning board." So I would have to recuse myself if I made a decision at this time.
Well, I'm not too sure exactly how it ought to be figured, but they've got 1.75 acres up there, and if you look at that one largest thing, the eighty-seven units, that would be fifty-one units an acre. So it's really... And four stories? We don't have any four stories on... So it would be... Brings up a lot of issues. It'll be interesting.
And micro-units, isn't that what a boarding house is?
Sort of.
I mean...
Except you get your own bathroom, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, you have cooking facilities, you can...
Well, it's a tiny studio apartment.
Right, oh, I know what it is, but, you know, couldn't that be squeezed into the... What we already allow? We allow boarding houses.
This is what we'll be looking at. And by discussing it, we will publicize that.
Yeah.
John?
I would just prefer that they refine their ideas and plans as much as possible before they come in front of us.
Oh, so that the... We wouldn't be giving them a showcase for those pictures?
I think that's their responsibility. Get it as refined as possible. I don't want to start negotiating with people, and I would prefer that they refine their ideas and some plans and come see us. That's my opinion.
Oh, okay.
I'm trying to agree with John on that.
Do you?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're in a battle, and they want to bring it to our table.
Ah.
Well, not just for that. I think that an applicant should...
Yeah, they should.
Otherwise, bring it to Jen, let Jen be a sounding board or whatever. I mean, that's what the town planner's for. I just would rather see it more refined before it comes in front of us.
Well, we already don't allow four-story buildings, so that's a nonstarter right there.
That's what I'm saying. I don't want to just spend my evening negotiating with somebody. I'd rather...
No, I think you're right. I hadn't looked at it that way. I had looked at it as a way to begin the discussion about dormitory-style micro-unit zoning, but we can put it off.
Well, if anybody's listening to us tonight from the EDIC, they will hear that.
Mm-hmm. Well, and Paul will let them know.
I went to the EDIC meeting this morning, but there really wasn't much discussion on this issue.
Uh-huh.
I was wanting to hear what they had to say, but they didn't really get into it. Previously, they had.
Yeah.
And there's stuff on the website we can circulate to the rest of the board if you're interested.
Sure can.
Okay, through Jen. Any other future agenda items? No. Our next meeting is March twenty-second.
I'm going to move it to your minute.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Aye.